Uniform personnel, present. Halt. Please join me. I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Halt. Detail about face. Let's get the Citrus Heights Police Department on guard a round of applause. Ms. Van, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey is absent.
And next item is the video statement.
So this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 16th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Any changes?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and before we move into presentations, I would like to thank everybody for being here for our 20th anniversary kickoff celebration, and recognize some folks, dignitaries, in attendance tonight. First off, we have Assemblyman Ken Cooley. Supervisor Sue Frost. And we have a representative from Senator Nielsen's office. Brandon, right?
Landon.
Landon, I see, I wasn't... And from Congressman Baer's office. Okay. Now we can move to presentations.
So our first presentation, number four, is recognition of outgoing Mayor Jeannie Bruins.
Okay, well, Jeannie, since we have a bunch of stuff going on down at the podium, I was just gonna stay up here, and...
Good with that.
I did want to say it's my extreme pleasure to recognize you as our outgoing mayor, and it's extra special because Jeannie was a huge part of our city's incorporation efforts. And you guided us through a smooth year last year, and you were extremely responsive to both our residents and neighborhood concerns, and if there was a ribbon cutting, you were there too. So, please accept some of these small tokens we've gathered for you for appreciation and our extreme gratitude from not only council and staff, but from our citizens, and for your successful completion... Is this your third or fourth year as a mayor?
This is my third time around as mayor.
Third time. Well, you'll always be mayor in our heart.
Well... Don't make me do...
I think... There's a couple gifts there if you'd grab them.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
You have a nice little plaque.
Oh, nice.
And a surprise.
And a surprise. Is it money? A trip? Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Oh, it's a book with my picture on the front. Oh, it's my year in review. I will look at it later. That is awesome. Thank you. Well, I want to thank the council and our city manager and the staff for just being such a great support of me last year, and especially the folks in the community. It was a busy year last year. We had lots of changes. We opened City Hall. We retired a city manager. We hired another one, and we did some work with our neighborhood associations, and we had our police department's 10-year anniversary. And, you know, when you participate in these events, it's always a lot of fun, but there's an awful lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to make them happen. And so, it was really my joy and my privilege to be mayor last year, but come December, I was ready to pass it on to Jeff. So, thank you all. I love being on the city council. I love serving our community, and I just want to extend my gratitude to all who participated in this tonight. Thank you.
Could you please call on item five?
Next item is a presentation by Republic Services on the recycling poster contest winners.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Miller, members of the city council, Mary Poole with the General Services Department, and Anna Rulon with Republic Services, and we're going to present the Citrus Heights 20-year anniversary commemorative edition of the Customer Service Guide Calendar Annual Poster Competition Awards. So this celebration, this commemoration of this calendar, which goes out to every resident, every residential customer of Republic Services in early January. This year, we are... It's a commemorative edition, and it's part of the city's kickoff of the 20-year anniversary celebration, and it's one of several celebratory presentations and activities this evening. And as you will see, it is... It's super special what these young students, young citizens of Citrus Heights have done for us this year, and I'm going to let Anna take it from there and show you.
Thanks, Mary. As Mary said, I'm Anna Rulon. I work with Republic Services. So in the past, our poster contests have focused around the themes of recycling and waste reduction. This year, we decided to go a little bit different, since it is the 20-year anniversary of Citrus Heights. So for our commemorative edition of the annual Customer Service Guide Calendar, which goes out to all 27,000 houses here in Citrus Heights, many of you probably already have it on your refrigerator, or somewhere in your home right now as I speak, we decided to have the theme be "My Favorite Thing About Citrus Heights." So this was the only prompt that the students had to create their artwork and put whatever they'd like to honor the city and honor their favorite things about the city. This presentation and this whole program is hosted by Republic Services, which is, of course, the residential trash and recycling service provider for all households here in Citrus Heights. And this program would not be possible without our partnership with the San Juan Unified School District. And of course, all of the schools in Citrus Heights, the teachers, the students, the staff, it wouldn't be possible without them. This contest was open to all SJUSD students that live here in Citrus Heights, as well as any other student living in Citrus Heights that may not go to an SJUSD school. And this presentation, or this program, was open to all students K through eight. So this was our biggest competition yet. We not only had elementary schools participating, but this year, we had middle schools and K-8 schools. We had nine participating schools from Citrus Heights, and we had over 1,000 entries, which is the most we've ever had. So we were really pleased with that number. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing 13 talented artists from Citrus Heights. All of these students will be receiving a certificate and a $25 gift card, and of course, their beautiful artwork is featured in our calendar. And we have one grand prize winner out of these 13, and she will be receiving a certificate and a $50 gift card. And her artwork is not only featured on one month in the calendar, but it is featured on the cover of the calendar. And then lastly, we will be recognizing the school that had the most student participation, and they will be receiving a $500 gift card to use towards the arts or extracurriculars, however they see fit. So at this time, I would like to invite the vice mayor down to help me give out the presentations, the awards, and certificates. And when I call the student's name, I would like them to walk up here while we give them a round of applause, and we will be taking some pictures. And I would like them to stay up here. Let's go right up here in the front. And if you, students, could stay up here for the duration of the presentation while all the names are called, and then once all the students are called, and the principal of the winning school is up here, we will take some group photos as well. And if any family members or friends in the audience would like to take pictures, please feel free. You can even run up here and take some pictures.
Get close.
All right, so... And you should be in order. You want to stand right over here? And if you could hand them the certificates, and I'll hand them the gift cards. And they're in order. All right, so without further ado, I'll be introducing our 13 talented artists from Citrus Heights. Whoops. The first one is from Lykan K-8 School. We had one winner from this school, and that is Celine Penna from the 6th grade. And of course, Celine is not here. From Mariposa Elementary, we have one winner. Ariana Gómez from the 3rd grade. And Ariana's poster focuses on all of the fun activities that we host at Rush Park.
So you'll notice, as you see these posters come up on the screen, how detailed they are and how these students were really thoughtful about what is happening in Citrus Heights and how many favorite things that they thought of to feature.
And our next school is Kingswood K-8. We have one winner from there. Liliana Mejia from the 5th grade. And not that I have any favorites, but this one really touched my heart when I saw it. From Woodside K-8, we have two winners. Maya Taff from the 6th grade. And Michael Lebchanon from the 5th grade. This poster probably looks very familiar to all of you. Our next school is Carriage Drive Elementary, and we have two winners. Kaylee Tsai from the 2nd grade. You will notice the recycling garbage truck in this poster. And Sofia Galdemez, 1st grade. And this was one of our only posters that actually was painted. And moving on to Sylvan Middle School, we have four winners. Megan Slaw from the 8th grade. Diana Lutzick from the 7th grade. And Ella Mae Pacleb from the 6th grade. Megan Slaw from the 8th grade.
And you'll see in Victoria's rendition, she even shows our K-9 officer Dax up there. So she's got him named, and our officer's badge number up there. Detail-oriented.
And our 2016 grand prize winner, who is featured in two sections of the calendar from Skycrest Elementary, is Evelina Collinouk from the 5th grade. First, right before we do that, to recognize Arlington Heights, which was the school with the most student participations, and I'm hoping that the principal made it... Is that you? Awesome. Round of applause for Arlington Heights. And now we can take some group shots. Maybe if half of you come in front? Thank you so much. And of course, we would just like to thank all of our judges. We had some folks at Republic Services that helped judge, and a lot of people from Citrus Heights city staff that helped judge. They had to pick 13 winners out of 1,000, which is pretty impressive in itself. And then we want to thank all of the schools that participated in this program. Arlington, Carriage, Mariposa, Skycrest, Kingswood, Lykan, Woodside, and Sylvan. And of course, last but not least, happy 20-year anniversary slash happy birthday to the city of Citrus Heights. Thank you very much.
Anna? Thank you for all your work on this as well, and thank you to Republic Services for facilitating this and for you putting all the plaques in order. That was great. Okay, I think we're ready for item six.
Item six is our 20th anniversary presentation.
Vice Mayor Miller and council members, I'm Rhonda Sherman with the Community and Economic Development Department, and to my left is Rhonda Rivera with the Human Resources and City Information Department.
Good evening.
We have a brief presentation highlighting the past 20 years of cityhood, and we'll give you a snapshot of what we're going to be doing to celebrate this during 2017.
So as Rhonda mentioned, we have just a brief PowerPoint for you. This first slide just depicts some of the firsts that we had with our cityhood. We have the first city council. We have the first city hall, first Halloween in our first city hall. We have our planning commission, and have some other pictures there that you can see. And one of the things that we've done is that we are celebrating the 20 years. So we've created a timeline that's on the city's website, and what Rhonda's doing here is showing what it looks like. And so we've depicted many of the milestones, starting back with just the incorporation effort. The first thing was from November of 1984, when CHIP held their first meeting. And then there'll be milestones going through each year and taking us all the way up to the current year. And as you can see, if you just go across the timeline, there'll be different... It'll give you the date when something happened. It'll give you what the milestone was. There's a little flag at the bottom that just summarizes it, and if you click on it, you can actually see if there was an article, something that would depict what happened during that year. And as you can see, this one was showing Measure R from the vote, the election in 1996. 62.4% of the residents voted for cityhood, and that's pretty amazing. That's just awesome. And here again, we're showing the first city council. And we did the creation of the neighborhood associations. And appointing our first city manager, Henry Tingle, who just retired this last September. The History and Arts Commission is established. And here we have the Olympic torch. So as you can see with the various pieces going through and depicting 20 years, there are a lot of milestones. Of course, here we have our police department in 2006. We built the community center. And we did the revamp on our website. Some of the... And the timeline shows some of the major developments, and then our city hall.
The timeline also includes video. So as you're going through, you click on the arrow and you either news feed or video that we've taken.
And then appointing our new city manager, Christopher Boyd. And then if you go through on the very last item, you'll see for the timeline is tonight's celebration for the 20 years. And this slide just depicts 33 of the original CHIP members, and that was the Citrus Heights incorporation project. And we applaud them for their effort. If it had not been for them, the city would not be where we are today, and so we do very much applaud them for their work. And something that's amazing is the city has been a city for 20 years, and we have had 12 residents who have been elected to lead this city and bring us where we are today. And it's just absolutely amazing, and we thank them very much for their input, their direction, their leadership. And we applaud them. And part of this presentation, we just wanted to give you a brief idea of what this year of celebration is going to look like. So the kickoff is, of course, tonight to celebrate the 20 years of incorporation. We... Our signature event that we've created for this year is going to be a block party to be held on June 3rd. We've created some activities. One of the things that we wanted to do was to have the residents be involved in what's going on with the celebration. And so we created a top 20 list. Each month, there'll be a different top 20 list, and that list is populated by input that we receive from our residents, citizens, businesses. And each month, there'll be some... It'll be revealed, and we'll give a little bit more information about that in a minute. We've also created a traveling 20-year booth. So the city of Citrus Heights is known for having family-friendly events, and what we wanted to do was create this traveling booth that we could bring to each of the events that would provide some information about 20 years of cityhood. Our History and Arts Commission is busy putting together a special event that will involve the residents and just highlight Citrus Heights in the 20 years. And then we've created a few special features. Just to name a few, we have a special spot on our website where you can highlight information about the 20-year, find out what's going on. The timeline that we showed you. We created social media, putting... Sending out things through Twitter, and we have some special Facebook accounts. And then you should have already received special connections commemorating the 20 years, and if you haven't, we have some in the back that you can take with you. As I mentioned, one of our signature event is going to be our block party. And there is a special website that's been set up at citrusheightsblockparty.net. We were real original, wanted to make it real easy so people could find it. And our party will be held on June 3rd from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. right across the street over here at Van Maron Park. And if you want to get some information, be a vendor, participate, you can go to that website location, download the form, and it's going to be a lot of fun. We're making it family-friendly. There'll be some food vendors there. There'll be actually a lot of food vendors there. There's going to be a kids' zone. If anyone's been to our Sunday Fun Day, any of our city events, you know that we do a big focus on things that are family-friendly, and we're definitely keeping that theme for this event.
So as Rhonda mentioned, community participation is really important for our 20-year, and so we've created these top 20 lists, and they were generated by the community. We have one list for each month, and they're listed out here on... And in the red, these are lists that we're going to generate from social media. And next month is the Things You Love About Citrus Heights. We've got an introduction to that today with the kids' artwork. So what you can do is tweet us at City of CH... I'm sorry, City of C Heights, and include the hashtag CHturns20, and submit what you love about Citrus Heights. And we'd love to have pictures or just text. And if that's Greek to you, you can also email it to us or visit us here at City Hall to let us know what you love about Citrus Heights. So get your submissions in by the end of the month, and we will...
We still have a working fax machine too, don't we?
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah, seven...
And snail mail?
You can do snail mail as well. So we'll unveil it at our February 9th city council meeting. So for January, our top 20 is the accomplishments and awards. And here they are.
website location, download the form, and it's going to be a lot of fun. We're making it family-friendly. There'll be some food vendors there. There'll be actually a lot of food vendors there. There's going to be a kids' zone. If anyone's been to our Sunday Fun Day, any of our city events, you know that we do a big focus on things that are family-friendly, and we're definitely keeping that theme for this event.
So as Rhonda mentioned, community participation is really important for our 20-year, and so we've created these top 20 lists, and they were generated by the community. We have one list for each month, and they're listed out here on, and in the red, these are lists that we're going to generate from social media. And next month is the Things You Love About Citrus Heights. We've got an introduction to that today with the kids' artwork. So what you can do is tweet us at City of CH, I'm sorry, City of C Heights, and include the hashtag CHturns20, and submit what you love about Citrus Heights. And we'd love to have pictures or just text. And if that's Greek to you, you can also email it to us or visit us here at City Hall to let us know what you love about Citrus Heights. So get your submissions in by the end of the month.
We still have a working fax machine too, don't we?
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah, seven, yeah.
And snail mail?
You can do snail mail as well. So we'll unveil it at our February 9th city council meeting. So for January, our top 20 is the accomplishments and awards. And here they are. They appear in alphabetical order, and I think you can see that it's a very impressive lineup of many of the things that the city founders had in mind when the city became a city, and also some icing on the cake. It covers lots of different areas from infrastructure improvements to business community, neighborhood associations. And then we also have several very special awards that we've received over the last 20 years, including the 2003 Heroes for Human Service Award for the marching band, two-time winner of the NUSA Award, that's Neighborhood USA, for Area 10, and also our two-time winner of the James Q. Wilson Award for Excellence in Community Policing. So we'd like to finish our presentation with a 20th anniversary highlight video. I'm going to turn that on.
We've seen this community grow up and actually struggle, and then take control of its own affairs with incorporation and thrive.
Citrus Heights was a forsaken community by the county of Sacramento.
We were the, we were the location where all the low-income housing went. We were the location where all the social services got situated. And then when we'd go down and articulate our concerns, we'd be patted on the head and told, "Oh, we'll take care of it. Hang tight, we'll take care of it."
We produced a lot of revenue through sales tax and other taxes, and they were able to spread that money throughout the county. And that's fine. However, we weren't getting back the services that we needed, so we were languishing as a community while the rest of the county was benefiting from the revenue produced from Citrus Heights. And the Chamber of Commerce actually drove the effort for incorporation. Local citizens and who are businesspeople, particularly Jack and Jean Duncan, and our business community saw that there would be a benefit to something different from what we were experiencing as county residences and businesses. Well, the county fought us all along the way because it meant a loss of revenue for them, a loss of control for them. They lost on the vote issue, and they appealed it. They appealed it to the appellate court, they lost there. They appealed it to the state Supreme Court, they lost there, and then they took it to the U.S. Supreme Court, if you can believe that. So they lost there because the U.S. Supreme Court judges decided this was not the case they wanted to hear. So that meant the lower court ruling held, and we won. That process took six years.
It was a real commitment from the citizens of Citrus Heights, and it was taking a chance on us, what they did.
Of course, remember, the county has all the money and all the power. We don't have any of that, so we're this little grassroots effort of local citizens trying to make this happen.
Sometimes people will stop me on the street and ask me if incorporation met my goals and dreams, and my response always is that it exceeded any of my wildest dreams.
Typically, you run into an obstacle like, you know, the county says no, you just pack it in and say, "Can't do it." But this particular group fought all the way to the Supreme Court.
When the city first incorporated, and the five of us were elected to the original city council, we learned that when you first start a new city, you have no building, you have no staff, and you have no money.
When we formed a city, the first night we had our first meeting, we discovered that we didn't even have insurance if someone sued the city. So we had to borrow $100,000 from River City Bank to make sure that we could purchase insurance.
The city council at that time, you know, put out an RFP for looking for a new city manager. But the bottom line is, is they hired Henry Tingle and promoted him from being General Services Director to becoming our city manager.
And I developed what is called a pay-as-you-go philosophy. Probably the only, this is probably the only place that I'm aware of where there is a community with no debt.
About 11 years ago, maybe 12 years ago, Henry proposed that we have our own police department, and that was met with pretty much of a brick wall with a lot of folks in our community.
Everybody thought we'd fail, and now we have a premier police department that is the envy of the region.
We've really been able to put in some award-winning and extraordinary, cutting-edge crime reduction concepts that have really worked great for us.
Outstanding police services in the city, led by an outstanding chief, and the community is a benefit of this outstanding law enforcement.
We didn't have any police protection. We didn't have anything here in the city that our tax dollars was going to Sacramento instead of staying here in Citrus Heights, so.
This is just, this is a success story.
And so we just want to invite you, the residents, citizens of Citrus Heights, our business community, to join in with us as we celebrate this year. And as you can see, we have a lot to celebrate, and we just appreciate all your influence, and we're looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. And now I'd like to present a proclamation to those of you here and all of our citizens, really, and ask our city manager, Chris Boyd, to accept it on your behalf. And when I'm done reading this, if you'd make sure this gets displayed in a prominent location, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
2017 marks the 20th anniversary of the City of Citrus Heights and of January, and as of January 1st, 97, after a 12-year struggle to achieve autonomy and the freedom to self-govern, Citrus Heights was incorporated as a city. The city is committed to providing high-quality, economical, and responsive city services to our community, and Citrus Heights strives to be the place and the city of choice for residents and businesses to prosper and thrive, as well as a model of neighborhood engagement. The city values diversity, integrity, teamwork, innovation, respect, responsive customer service, and trust. We have significantly improved the local infrastructure, invested over $100 million in infrastructure improvement projects on our roads and streets over the past two decades. And the city supports and fosters relationships with its active business community, including the Sunrise Marketplace, Antelope Crossing's Business Association, Auburn Boulevard Business Association, and the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the award-winning Citrus Heights Police Department has successfully lowered crime rates and managed operating costs since its launch in 2006, and the city constructed a new state-of-the-art city hall, community center, police station, and 911 emergency call center. And I have to stop here and editorialize. They were all under budget, done on time, without any debt, and they were built to better serve our community. And whereas the city is favored with a dynamic and active community that consistently demonstrates a high level of civic pride and extensively participates in local service groups and organizations, and we operate as a pay-as-you-go city and have never incurred debt, and whereas the Citrus Heights community expresses pride and appreciation for the many civic and economic benefits all have enjoyed over the past 20 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Citrus Heights hereby encourages the entire community to celebrate our history, to recollect the many ways in which our community is unique and special, and do by hereby acknowledge and proclaim the year 2017 as the Citrus Heights, City of Citrus Heights 20th anniversary. And it's signed by Mayor Jeff Slowey on the 12th day of September, 2017. Thank you. And as I return to the dais, I'd like to invite Assemblyman Ken Cooley to the podium.
Maybe I'll emulate Steve Miller and stand and face this way. It is just a great honor to be here, and I'm thinking tonight, as you celebrate 20 years as a city, how much you changed not just your own community, but really the county. I remember when I first moved to Sacramento County in the 70s, it was a commonplace that it was very easy to remember the community of Sacramento. They would describe it as, well, you have Sacramento and you have the FIG cities. Have you ever thought about that? Folsom, Isleton, Galt, Folsom, Isleton, Galt, Folsom, Isleton, Galt. They've been around forever. If you want to remember the cities of Sacramento County, it's Sacramento and the FIG cities. Folsom, Isleton, Galt. So with the formation of Citrus Heights, that went out the window. We had to change our whole nomenclature about to remember what's exciting and happening in Sacramento County. And as a founder of the City of Rancho Cudovah, I can attest that the success of the City of Citrus Heights was instrumental in the success and the formation in the course of time of the City of Elk Grove, the City of Rancho Cudovah. And I can attest that the reputation that you hear a lot about your city, your financial wherewithal, this pay-as-you-go philosophy, this be prudent with the public's tax dollars, has established an outstanding reputation up and down the state. When the state comptroller, John Chung, was looking at sort of maladministration of cities around California a number of years back, one of the places they looked as an example of an outstanding managed city was Citrus Heights. So just in so many ways, the record of this city is so outstanding. And I also want to note, I actually think it is magnificent, it is beautiful, that Evelina Kalinyuk of, and I forgot the school, but a 5th grader, that grand prize poster, Citrus Heights Feels Like Home, was sort of her message. And when you really think about what does it mean to form a city, there's already been this discussion. The government of this community used to be downtown, outside of this community. And cityhood is all about bringing your future from downtown right here to home. And so cityhood is really about bringing our future home, so Evelina's poster, I think, is so apt, that she was not even a glimmer in her parents' eye when the city was formed, but her experience of it is Citrus Heights Feels Like Home. What a wonderful gift. And I just want to attest the innumerable quality of decisions that your city councils had to make. Starting, you heard the mention of needing insurance early on, but even the conversation of what to go into the city logo. I can assure you, your early city council labored over that. What is the fit symbol for this city? And then issues like Sayonara, which was celebrated as one of the accomplishments of the last 20 years, undergrounding of utilities done in partnership with SMUD on Antelope. There are just so many, many things, and I know, having been a city founder, that your council member, council members lay awake at night fretting the details of the future of this community. This is why, under Henry Tingle's leadership, and will continue under Mr. Boyd's leadership, this has been such a successful city. And they hire outstanding people. There's a lot of expertise in this city, but I know in the City of Citrus Heights, I think I could describe their philosophy as experts should be on tap, but never on top. It is the elected leadership that are on top in the City of Citrus Heights, working on the future, pulling in outstanding talent to kind of help them in every way. So I just want to say, as your assemblyman, it is an honor to represent this city in the Capitol, to tell the story of Citrus Heights around the state and in our region, to support your leadership in building a better future, growing this future, this great future that even your children are touched by, as we've seen tonight, the Republic poster contest. And I have a resolution in honor of this great 20-year milestone, and I just know it reflects a great affection for the community of Citrus Heights, a determination to make the future better, to prosper the community at every turn, and particularly in this community, to use every resource as wisely, as aptly, as prudently as possible to kind of usher in that better future. Because I know in this city, they know you can only spend a dollar once, so you want to spend it where it will get the best outcome and save the others for the next problem that is yet to come. And I think that is a philosophy that really augurs well for the future. So anyway, a great honor to be here, and Mr. Mayor, I'll send that to you. Thank you.
And Assemblymen, if you could stick around, we're going to do like the kids and have a group photo in just a sec. And next, I'd like to invite to the podium former council member and now Sacramento County Supervisor, Sue Frost.
It's a great honor to be here with all of you to celebrate the kickoff of Citrus Heights' 20th year, and I just, I want to congratulate the Citrus Heights Chamber and those citizens who initially had the vision and the courage to fight for something that they could see. I want to congratulate all of our city leaders over the years who have accomplished amazing things. Our city manager, Henry, former city manager, Henry Tingle, who sort of set the stage and built a foundation where we could really establish ourselves as a city that's known for something, fiscal responsibility. I want to congratulate former Chief Boyd and current city manager, Chris, for establishing the best police department in California, for lowering crime every year since the police department was established, and for making our neighborhoods safer and improving our property values, and helping us, helping us be a better city. I think public safety is the heart of economic development and at the heart of everything that has to do with community. And I want to congratulate the city executives who have, over the years, done a really wonderful job managing things and helping the leaders along, and the staff who have been just inspired. It's because of you guys that we're where we are, because you did most of the work. And I think you probably know that. I'm here as a new supervisor, and as a former council member, you know, I have a different experience, different experiences in Citrus Heights. I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve with great leaders who have mentored me, and I'm grateful as a neighborhood leader and volunteer to have had the city leadership that got behind us and helped us accomplish good things in our neighborhoods. And as a citizen of Citrus Heights, I'm grateful for the, you know, the way you've managed the city and watched out for the taxpayers. And tonight, I have a resolution on behalf of the entire Sacramento Board, County Board of Supervisors. I want to congratulate the City of Citrus Heights and I want to congratulate the City of Citrus Heights and congratulate you on your 20th year and wish you God's blessings for the next 20 years and all good things for the next chapter. And so, congratulations.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask Landon, formerly known as Brandon Wolf, up to the podium.
First Senator Nielsen would have liked to apologize that he could not attend the event tonight, but he wants to let everyone know that he respects the heck out of the city for the fiscal prowess it has had over all these 20 years and the rich history it is developing and will continue to develop, and has been honored to serve the City of Citrus Heights and looks forward to continuing to celebrate 20 great years and participating in the other events this year. And again, blessings, as Supervisor Frost mentions, blessings for the next 20 years and beyond. So thank you so much for having me here tonight, and we will see you throughout the year. So let's keep celebrating.
And next, I'd like to ask Keen Chakwunida, I hope I got that correct, close, from Congressman Amy Barra's office.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Keen. I'm a field representative from Congressman Amy Barra's office. Really, I want to kind of echo the sentiments that everybody else has said just before me. But I also wanted to say that whenever people ask me, "How did you get into your job?", I always tell them the truth, which is that I'm an organizer. So the story that I hear here, like, really actually touches close to me, because organizing is essentially, in a way, doing exactly what happened here. You start out with an idea, and you go and you tell a neighbor, and the neighbor says, "Oh, yeah, that sounds good." And you go to another neighbor, and they're like, "Yeah, that sounds great, too." And then before you know it, you have power, because you have a group. And then you use that power to kind of take control of your destiny. And I think that's kind of what happened here. And really, what they did was they took control, they took that all the way to the Supreme Court, and they won. And now we're here 20 years later, because these people have taken that power that they had, and they made smart, prudent, you know, fiscally sound investments in their future. And I really just want to say that our office really supports that work, and here's to 20 years more. So in celebration of this, what we have here is a congressional certificate congratulating the City of Citrus Heights on their 20-year anniversary. So here's to 20 years more, and congratulations.
Okay, that concludes the formal presentations, and now I'd like to call up some members from the audience that wanted to speak. Kristy Woodard's, general manager of Sunrise Mall. And while she's coming up, we will get to the official public comment at our regular meeting as soon as we're done here. So if you're here to talk on another subject, please be patient, and we'll get to you. Kristy, hi.
Hi, hi, y'all. I'm also here with my Sunrise Marketplace chair hat on, so I'm going to kind of talk globally as a representative of the mall and a representative of the marketplace, because what's good for the mall is good for the marketplace and vice versa. So we just want to express to you, the board, ownership of the mall, how thankful we are to such a supportive city, staff, the efforts that are made every single day on behalf of the residents, behalf of business. I tell this to a lot of folks when they come in, especially now that we have new owners. They don't know until they really experience the city how special this is. I've managed properties in retail for the last 30-plus years, from Seattle to San Diego, and I say to everyone I meet, "This is the most exciting, wonderful, compassionate experience I've ever had for city government and for city staff and for police." This is not normal. You folks are not normal, in a good way, because you offer so much to the residents and you offer so much to us as business people and help us succeed. I mean, we come to you so often with requests. Sometimes they're last minute, sometimes they're well thought out, sometimes they're not. But it's never go back and think about it. It's, okay, let's get on board, let's figure it out, and together, let's make something happen. That doesn't happen anywhere else. And I think we've been able to accomplish what we have with the district, and I think all businesses within Citrus Heights because of that support. We don't have to stay within a box when we think about our business, when we think about how do we make things better, because we know we can come to you and you're willing to discuss and be a partner with us. And that is so important, especially when times get harder with, especially in business retail. We need to be innovative, and you guys are innovative, always have been from the very inception. So it's a great honor to be part of the city. It's a great honor to be able to work with all of you and on behalf of the board and our ownership. Thank you so much for all that you do and all that you represent.
Thank you, Kristy. Next, I'd like to call forward Bill and Kathy Cook, along with Cody Tickner from the Citrus Heights Marching Band.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here today. We are the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band. My name is Cody Tickner. I'm the performing director. I have Kathy Cook, our founder, and Bill Cook, her husband, who has been promoting and building our organization for the last 12 years. We are, we have been called on many occasions the ambassadors of the City of Citrus Heights. We travel around the Sacramento area, performing and sharing our love of the city with everybody. And so we're here to share a little bit about how we'd like to celebrate the city's 20th anniversary. Trying to learn how to use this thing. The button, you can't see. Okay.
Time's up.
Okay. We have a theme every single year, and this year's theme is Fanfare for a New Era: Celebrating the City's 20th Anniversary. We'll perform this theme, which is a group of songs that all have a unifying sound to them. So we'll be playing Star Wars, E.T., The Extraterrestrial, Jurassic Park, and other popular and patriotic themes.
Very good.
There's some photographs of the band in our brand-new uniforms that we'll be wearing this year. We perform every year at events, including this year's 20th Anniversary Block Party, the Citrus Heights Red, White, and Blue Parade, Sunday Fun Day, the holiday Christmas tree lighting, and other events throughout the greater Sacramento area. And congratulations on 20 successful years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody, you want to make a brief mention about the spaghetti feed?
Oh, yes. On May, excuse me, March 18th, 2017, the band will be hosting its 8th Annual Spaghetti Feed fundraiser. We host roughly 800 guests at the community center, and tickets are $10 each, which have been the same price since we started this eight years ago. And we have entertainment, we have delicious food, and we have raffles, and it is a fun-filled evening, and we invite everybody in the community to be a part of it. And tickets sell up fast, so if you have any questions, you can contact us at chcb.org.
And I have tickets.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Cody. That was the quickest 25-slide presentation I've ever seen.
I could do it faster next time. Thank you.
Next, Mark Crefield, Executive Director of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. Hi, Mark.
Vice Mayor Miller and council members, it's really an honor to be here tonight. On behalf of the Citrus Heights Board of Directors, congratulations on 20 years. You know, I started with the chamber, although I've been in the industry for almost 10 years. I started five months ago, and it didn't take me very long to see that this is truly the best relationship I've ever seen a city have with its local Chamber of Commerce. And it's just an honor to be a part of this. The first member I actually met was Bill Van Duker, and had I known he was one of the founding fathers of the city, I probably would have asked for his autograph and taken a selfie with him. It's just really important, city and chamber, and what this city has done in 20 years is just an incredible accomplishment, you know? And I mean, 1997 wasn't too long ago. And what you all did to become a city, all the people that were involved in this process, is just an incredible feat. And you battled a lot of adversity along the way, and it wasn't easy. And seeing how it's all turned out is just absolutely incredible. And I just want you all to know that it is an honor to be a part of this city. And although I don't live in Citrus Heights, I absolutely picked the right city to be employed in. So on behalf of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors, congratulations on 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And next, Kermit from Stones Casino. And I've never gotten your last name right, so I'm not even going to try it again.
Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, Kermit Schultz. I always wanted to be Joe Smith. Really tired of the frog jokes, but nevertheless, I could stand here for an hour and tell the stories that I have to tell. Early on, in the late 80s, when the Godfather, Mr. Bill Van Duker, was active in the incorporation project, and I was running a small entertainment center known as the Lucky Derby. I didn't have much money to contribute to the effort. I had a couple hundred dollars, and Bill would tell me about the progress that was being made. It is such an honor to be a, to have lived and be a member of business, a member in the business community in this city. I have a story that I've told often about a publication, the head editorial about the success of Citrus Heights and its victory at the Supreme Court level, that the city would more than likely become like a beggar on a corner within the county of Sacramento. And my response was to them, it remains to be seen who will be the beggar on the corner. So I don't think there's anybody in this community that would disagree with me that what this city, this council, all the council members, your staff, and what everybody has accomplished. You gave myself, my partners, my family, an opportunity within a city. You listened to my voice when others wouldn't, and you allowed me to bring a business that now employs 400 people in this community, and I cannot thank you enough for that opportunity. Congratulations on all you have accomplished. I am so very, very proud to know each and every one of you and many more years of success. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Kermit. Next, from Exit 100, Dale Covey from the Antelope Crossings Business Association.
Vice Mayor Miller and council members, it really, it's a great pleasure to be here tonight. I have lived in Citrus Heights, right on Arcade Creek. I'm praying a lot lately. And my bank moved here to what is now called Antelope Crossing Business Association Business Area, which is right at Exit 100 off of Interstate 80, which I can remember driving down Antelope Road from Home Depot towards Interstate 80, and driving down that road and feeling like I was going through the ghetto. And it wasn't real easy to be a business when all of that construction was going on. It was, it was, it was, yeah. And at the same time, I am so proud of how beautiful it is. I'm also proud that the city listened when some of our business and property owners came and came to the city and said, "We need some help. We need help." And the city said, "Of course." And you helped us create a business association that I think is on its ninth year, I think is what we're celebrating with our Antelope Crossing Spooktacular for our Halloween event, which is so much fun. I am grateful in so many ways. I am proud to be a resident. I am proud to be a business manager. And as a bank manager, I am so happy with our police department. I've worked in uncomfortable situations with many police departments, and I worked for several years with the County of Sacramento Sheriff's Department. And once the police department came into being, it was like night and day. And I am so grateful for you, for what you put together. I am so grateful for what you, as a council, put together. And I do remember thinking myself, "Ooh, really? Can we really do that?" Yeah. Electric. So, you know, I could speak forever, like many. I just want to say congratulations on behalf of Antelope Crossing Business Association, and thank you as a business manager and a resident for all that you have done to create this wonderful city. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Next, I'd like to invite up Bill Van Duker. Bill, are you still awake? Yeah, there he is. And Bill was with the Chip and Corporation Project and All-Star Printing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Miller and the members of the council. I've changed my comments four times tonight, as I sat through listening. For Cody's benefit, when we started Citrus Sites Incorporated effort, Madonna's Like a Virgin was the big hit, and she's now practically a senior citizen. And every time Kermit calls me the Godfather, I wonder if I'm going to get a severed horsehead on my pillow. I was reflecting back when we started. There were 33 names up on the slide of people that had been involved in Chip, and I hope that we didn't omit anybody. There were some that were there from the very start and stayed through to the very end, like Jack and Jean Duncan, for example. There were others that came in for two or three years and either moved on or got discouraged or found other interests. I hung in there, because I'm a stubborn Dutchman, and we started out, I should mention the, all the chairs of Chip. We started out with Richard Wagner, who was president of the chamber, and then took on this task of cityhood. And he took it on for a year or two, and he passed away last year in 2015. Then I took it on for five years, and because I'm stubborn, I was there during all the court involvements. And if the city, or if the county had known how thin our ranks got during some of those years, they would be shocked, because we were down to four or five or six members that were active during some of those years, because it's hard to maintain momentum when you get a meeting together and say, "Well, our next court date is eight months away." But we persevered, and then Doug Osie took over as chairman of Chip and saw us through the process of getting the third vote on the Board of Supervisors to get us, our process moving again. And then Roberta McClashan, who And then Roberta McClashan, who in a prior life had been a career LAFCO person, took us through the LAFCO process. And then because Roberta wanted to run for city council, I came back and served the last year of Chip's existence as we prepared to go to the ballot. The first night when we were on the, when we were watching the election returns in the Chamber office over on Sunrise, we didn't know whether we were gonna win or lose at first, but the momentum started building for us. And it was interesting because Bill Hughes was there, and we had, Doug Ossie and I had sort of persuaded him to run for city council. And if you remember, his motto was, put a cop on the council. And we never regretted that. But as the votes came in and he was the number-one vote getter, he began to look like a deer in the headlights because he knew he was going to be the first mayor. And you already heard what some of the issues were when you form a new city, you know, no staff, no equipment, no insurance, no bank, no money. But the first city council was a wonderful group of people. And one of the things I remember the most about them is that there were very few divided votes. For the most part, all the important decisions were five O's. Now, that was different from Elk Grove because, first of all, Elk Grove failed the first time they went to the ballot, and the second time, there were people running for city council that said, I'm against incorporation, but I, if we happen to incorporate, I know I can be a better council member than those other turkeys that are running. We didn't have that situation. We had a unified city council, and I'm very grateful. The slide already said my comments about whether my dreams had been fulfilled or not. But I stand here twenty years later. I want to challenge the city to not stop here at twenty years and look at what we've done, but to look forward to what we can do because there's still a lot of things that can happen. We need to raise our sights about where we go from here, work on getting our schools up to par because schools are in critical influence on whether people move to Citrus Heights, get an event center. I could go on forever, and I won't. But I am grateful for the leadership that we've had for the last twenty years, and I'm grateful for the leadership that's presently in place. And I challenge you to look to the future and see where we can be twenty years from now. Thank you.
Richard Hale with Walt's Auto Service and the Auburn Boulevard Business Association.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Miller, that's a mouthful, and city council members. Yes, I am Richard Hale, owner of Walt's Auto Service and the chair of the Auburn Boulevard Business Association. I'm very excited to be here tonight to kick off the celebration for twenty years. I'd like to thank, again, the people that were here in the beginning, like Bill Van Duker, Jeannie Bruins, Gina and Jack Duncan, and many more people, as we saw in the slide before, that worked so hard to become a city and so we can enjoy what they, their hard work today. Lori and I started our business in nineteen ninety-two on Canai Avenue, and in the early nineteen ninety-seven, we started our, building our current location on Auburn Boulevard. We were one of, some of the first parcels to be developed in our new city. We had some very interesting conversations with the city. We didn't always agree on the issues, but we worked together. Our goal was work together in the best interests of the city and our business. And at the end of the result, we were both satisfied with the goal. As business owners, we appreciate what we have in our city. I talk to a lot of people all the time and tell them how fortunate we are to run a business or live in this city and have easy access to all our assets. You can directly talk to our city manager, our mayor, our chief of police, and our city council. In many cities, that is not possible. There's a lot of red tape and a huge disconnect. And in, but in Citrus Heights, that's not the case, and I want to thank you for that. As the current chair of the Auburn Boulevard Business Association, we are very happy with the partnership we have developing with the city and working on our current and future projects. With the completion of Phase One on Auburn Boulevard Beautification Project and Phase Two to be started in the near future, and above, and above, and the completion of Auburn Boulevard Corner between Sylvan Corners and I-80 will be another successful story for the Citrus Heights. It's been very exciting to be in a front-row seat for the last twenty years and watch Citrus Heights grow it is today. As a Rotary member here in Citrus Heights, I always tell my fellow Otarians, there's no I in team. And that's the same philosophy the city has and has always had, and that's why I believe we are both so successful. So we are looking forward to the next twenty years in growth in Citrus Heights, and again, congratulations and to everybody involved to make it what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And we're getting there. We got two more speakers. Tony Zakata from Republic Services.
Hey, Vice Mayor, City Council, thanks for having us here tonight. Really amazing what you all have accomplished here, and, you know, we're just so proud to be part of this community. We're honored to be your recycling and garbage provider. And, you know, when you think of Citrus Heights, I think of community pride. I mean, look at all the folks here tonight. Just truly amazing, and on behalf of all the hard-working garbage men and women out there, working every day to keep this city clean, I just want to say congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And Kirk Trost from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, SACOG. Oh, and then one more, one last one.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Miller, members of the council. I just wanted to offer, on behalf of the other twenty-one cities and six counties in the Sacramento region, our congratulations to you on twenty years, our thanks for the regional leadership you've shown over the last twenty years. We talk a lot at SACOG about placemaking. What does it take to build a safe and healthy, livable community? And Citrus Heights has been an extraordinary and shining example of success in our region in that regard. I wanted to note two other things. It's with great pride every year that we give an award for the elected official of the year, and we do it in the name of Bill Hughes, an iconic figure in your history and in ours, and we do that happily every year. And finally, just on a personal note, I wanted to say that it's one of the prouder moments of my career that twenty years ago, I was one of the lawyers that defended your case all the way to the Supreme Court. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Chris. And finally, History and Arts Commissioner Jessica Mengs is gonna come quickly talk to us about the photo contest for a commemorative coffee table book.
Quickly, quickly.
Yes.
Hi, I just want to announce that we are having a photo contest that will go into a coffee table book that will be for sale at the June celebration. And we are looking for photographers, amateur and professional, that will turn in ten of their best photographs during the time period, they all have to be taken in Citrus Heights or things in Citrus Heights, during the time period of nineteen, January first, nineteen ninety-seven until February fifteenth of twenty seventeen. So it covers the last twenty years. It's gonna be called Citrus Heights, sorry, Citrus Heights, the First Twenty Years. And it will be a coffee table picture book of Citrus Heights. Memorable photographs, we're looking for everything. So all of the information, all of the applications are online. Look on the city website.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And that concludes the formal part of our twentieth anniversary kickoff. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask any of the other council members if they had any comments. Brett?
Yeah, I'll go. I can't believe twenty years. I really cannot believe twenty years. It just honestly seems like just real recently, and, but then when you think about the accomplishments that have occurred, it makes sense, you know, that it's been that long. And so, having grown up here, I know that the city today is just in a different league. It's not even close to what we had to endure when we were at the beck and call of the county. And so, we're lucky, we're extremely lucky. We were extremely lucky to have some key people involved in the beginning that didn't give up. And you can see what you can accomplish even when you have a very big thumb pushing you down with a lot of money. And it's just incredible what we are today, and thank you to everybody that got us here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Councilmember Bruins?
Thank you. And just, I'm gonna say, we're on behalf of Councilmember Turner, who's hoarse, and so he just extends his congratulations and his gratitude for all that's taken place the last twenty years as well. And I just want to ask Jack and Jean Duncan to stand up.
Oh, yeah.
Come on, guys. You know, thank you. I believe they were the first two.
Jeannie, I am the real Jack Duncan.
I know that. I believe you were the first two signatories on the petition for cityhood, if I remember correctly. And then you met my good friend, Bill Van Duker. He and I co-chaired the campaign for cityhood, Yes on Measure R. And, you know, because I am out in the public a lot, I am given accolades for that, but honestly, he had it nailed. I just was along for the ride. And I remember, I just, one comment, you know, the party, the night we had our victory party at the old Chamber of Commerce on Sunrise Boulevard, it was wild because we had, we didn't have the technology we have today, so we had someone in the back room of the B, of the neighbor section of the B, who was feeding us results before they were becoming public. So we knew that we were winning, and we were never behind, and it just, the gap got bigger. So the celebration went on until, I don't know, all night long. And reporters showed up, and it was, it was sweet, you know, very sweet. And I was running the Chamber of Commerce in those days, and I remember thinking I would take the next day off, just sleep all day. And I couldn't. I just had to come in, because the adrenaline was still flowing, and, of course, more reporters showed up the day after, and the chamber got the, was in the forefront because we were all that there was before there was a city. We were the only organized group of people. And I remember talking to Bill that next day, and he looked at me in the eye and goes, man, I hope this works. Those are exciting times. Those are really exciting times. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a kid like me and a guy like him and the rest of the Dunkins and Doug Ossie, who was such an instrumental part in those days in Roberta, to create a city, you know, and to impact the lives of eighty thousand people. And you hope that you did the right thing. And so, I'm so proud of our first city council who laid the groundwork that the rest of us have been able to build upon. I remember another conversation I had with Bill, who said to me, you know, and he was much more experienced than I was because he'd been on the planning commission for the county, and he knew how government worked. He said, you know, the first city council is a throwaway city council because, you know, they're good people, but they don't know what they're doing, you know? They've never done this before. And so, we really expected that to be the case, and it wasn't. We had a rock-solid first city council who just fought long and hard because the fight wasn't over. Once we, the vote was in, we still had big battles going on with the county over revenue neutrality that went on for a couple of years, and it finally got settled. And in the meantime, you know, that council is doing city council work, making those decisions in those early days and hiring contract people because you have to start from nothing and build something. It was amazing to watch. So, thank you all for being here tonight, and I'll turn it over to our mayor before I, don't stop talking.
All right. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, or Vice Mayor.
And as we come to a close at this part of the meeting, I'd like to remind everybody that you can follow us on Twitter at City of C Heights or on CitrusHeights.net for our website to get the latest details of the many festivities planned for 2017 to mark this momentous occasion. And with that, I'd like to take a two-minute recess. I've got some photos that I would like taken, and then we'll get right back to the business of the council meeting. So thank you very much.[1493.01] To call this meeting, Amy, you ready? Amy, you ready? Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Okay, next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Jeannie, do you have any?
Just real briefly, sanitation board meeting met yesterday, and we had a, an update on our Echo Water project, which we do, a quarterly update. The brief version of that update is that we are ahead of budget and on time, as we continue to work for the next six years before we have to finish it. We also had an update on our recycled water project. We, as a district, are working to build a recycled water project going forward, so that we can reclaim as much of the water as possible that, that flows through our wastewater treatment plant, and convert it to water that can be used for landscaping in the south area, where there's a lot of farmland, and so we had a report on that, and that was pretty much the extent of that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, sir. First, I want to take a moment to thank Jeannie. I didn't get to do that during the presentation, because Mr. Miller refused to let me. But, thank you, thank you, thank you for your service as the mayor last year, but also thank you for your service since you've been here. And I think, I feel truly that what I said when we honored Roberta is true to you also. Without Jeannie Bruins, there is no Citrus Heights today, and I only feel that way about a few people. And I mean that, and we owe you the biggest honor for everything that you've done for us, and we hope you stick around and, and just keep doing it. So, thank you very much. The next thing I would like to do is publicly thank the city manager, Chris Boyd, for making sure that during our heavy rain periods recently, that our streets stayed clear. I was out in the Sacramento area a little while back, a couple of weeks, when it was just torrential, and I'm going around flooded areas and all this stuff, and I'm just getting so frustrated and mad, and I finally make my way into Citrus Heights, and it really, it's like somebody parted the seas or something. And I sent him a message, and I said, "Hey, you know, I was doing this," and then I got into Citrus Heights and nothing, and he let me know what they've done above and beyond, you know, what the normal stuff is, and it really made a big difference, and for that, I want to publicly thank you. And then, yeah, that deserves a clap, definitely. And then I'm sure some hard-working staff, too. So, and then finally, I want to thank the people of Citrus Heights for honoring me with their vote in November. I didn't get a chance to mention that in our last meeting. I sincerely appreciate you putting that trust in me. I can't tell you how excited I am to come back to the council, and it's a different time period. My previous time was more towards the beginning, and now to see us at the 20-year point and be able to be involved again, I can't tell you how excited I am, and the things that I see, and the things that you've heard tonight about our city, and it just, we're the most remarkable place, not only in California, but probably in the United States. And so, thank you for that, and I hope to do it right for you. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have any regional boards to report on, so I think that's the end of comments by council and regional board updates. And with that, we can move to public comment.
Yes, so the next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy, and I'm going to allot five minutes, and that doesn't mean you have to take the entire five minutes if you've made your point. We can move on. And I'm taking these in the order I received them, and the first speaker sheet I have is from David Warren.
Good evening. My name's David Warren. I reside over in the Crosswoods. My first request is that public service come to behind my house. There's a guy named Noah building a boat out there.
Yeah.
And could you have somebody come out and move the homeless guy and his animals? But I'm on our case.
We're, we're still trying to figure out what a Cubit meant.
That's right. Still haven't figured that one out from two years ago. I'm here to address the issue of the Dignity Health building that is proposed. A recent article in the Sacramento Business Journal provided anecdotal information which indicated there's a, there is a financial crisis, or there may very well be a financial crisis, associated with Dignity Health. I received, again, anecdotal information that as a result of that financial difficulty, Dignity Health was unable to obtain long-term financing and construction, and/or construction financing for the building, and they plan on paying for the construction and of the building from current cash flow. With the current environment of the Affordable Care Act being revoked, it is going to add financial stress to Dignity Health, not just for Mercy Hospital here in San Juan, but all of the Dignity Health facilities, putting into question the financial stability of the project. My concern is a simple one. If the lease is going to be amended, which I believe it's going to be, that there need to be three provisions set forth in that lease, absolutely, for which there should be public discussion allowed in a town hall meeting. The first one is a construction-completion bond. As the lessors of the property, if we have a steel frame there, and Dignity Health is unable to complete the building, we will be put in the position the city of Elk Grove was, with the shopping center on Highway 99, a very large steel structure, for which, as the lessors of the property, we will very well likely be ended up, end up being financially responsible for the security and the completion of that building. The city should not be on the end of a long limb with no assurance of the financial stability of the builder. Second, the lease should provide that if there's a bankruptcy proceeding filed by the lessy, that the building cannot, that the lease is terminated, and the must, the structure must be returned to the city to assure that a bankruptcy trustee does not alter the purpose of that building. We've all gone forward on the presumption that it's going to be a medical building, but if in bankruptcy, the bankruptcy trustee sells that, that benefit to a third party who decides to use it for a different purpose, we, the bankruptcy courts can alter the lease and force the city to change its purpose. Finally, we must have a completion date set forth in the lease because they're self-funding. I have anecdotal information received that Dignity Health is cutting the wages of physicians and nurses in order to meet its cash flow. If there's a slowdown in cash flow, and they start and start, start and stop, start and stop, it may be a significant period of time before the building is completed, creating a liability for the, our municipality. In order to assure the residents of this community that we will not be left holding the bag to pay for the completion of the building and/or its demolition, should that become necessary, I believe a town hall meeting should be scheduled by the city council to invite the appropriate individuals, persons most knowledgeable from Dignity Health, perhaps just Mercy Hospital, but hopefully from Dignity Health who are responsible for the payments, to come and explain to our community how we can be assured that they will complete the project as provided, and that the terms of the lease will not allow it to be transferred to some third party who changes its purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I have Vikram Balay and Leanna Ani. I hope I'm saying that right. Was I even close?
Yes, right on.
Good. Good answer.
Good evening, honorable councilmembers and Vice Mayor Miller. My name is Vikram, and I'm here with Lena, and we are members of the Breed California Youth Advisory Board. And before I begin, I just wanted to congratulate you on 20 years.
Thank you.
And this was before I was born, so I just wanted to say that I'm really inspired by the community effort, and it's motivated me to continue working in my own community. And so, we work together on, alongside Breed board members, who are serving to protect the air that we all breathe, and we are here today to bring your attention to the issue of drifting tobacco smoke in apartments, especially exposure to secondhand smoke, which causes diseases in children and adults who don't even smoke.
Hi, I'm Lena, and as active members of our community who have witnessed the dangers of tobacco products, we seek to create a smoke-free environment for all apartment housing in Citrus Heights. Secondhand smoking presents serious health risks to neighbors, especially developing children, even if located several units down. Laws must be passed and enforced to create a smoke-free environment, where tenants can breathe easier and be safeguarded from smoking-related, yeah, fires, and landlords can expect savings in the form of reduced maintenance and turnover costs. Discouraging smoking in apartment housing will certainly ensure that the non-smoking residents will be protected from the negative influences and hazards of tobacco products.
And just a little bit more background about us, our youth advisory board is a group comprised of talented young leaders ages 14 through 21, who join Breed's efforts in education, policy, advocacy, and research for clean air, lung health, and a tobacco-free future. And we've been very successful in working with the government to increase the age to buy tobacco to 21-years-old, and to include electronic smoking devices in state laws.
When you address drifting tobacco smoke in apartment housing in Citrus Heights, we can provide well-researched background information and activate community support. We know there are 8,351 rental units here, and 42% of Citrus Heights residents rent. We can also help people quit smoking. We have recently set up a booth at Arden Fair Mall as part of the Great American Smokeout. Our board handed out Quit Smoking Quits to help encourage, help and encourage addicts to take steps in ridding their addiction. Thank you for letting us speak this evening, and we hope you will work with us in making Citrus Heights apartments smoke-free as part of your 20th anniversary year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job. Next, I have James Byrd and Mike William. I didn't know if you were gonna join him as well, or?
Uh, separate.
Okay.
Are you there?
I'm here.
I'm gonna make sure this works. Yeah, I live at 6743 Potakeaway, and we kind of share the rent, like four or five people there, you know? And this lady, Melanie Miller, I guess she brought in a boyfriend with two pit bulls, and we've had nothing but a terrorist-type lifestyle. He's out of prison, gang member. I guess he thinks he's in prison. He started fighting with me and my brothers, thinking we're gang members or something, and we've had, we've called the police six, seven times, and they said that, you know, you can go get a restraining order. Well, I've done that before. There, we had an incident where he kicked the door in, chased my brother with two pit bulls. We had three witnesses, and the police didn't do their job very proper. I have nothing against them, they're very good, and, but we'd like to get this issue solved. We've been going on two, three months. She brought him in there with nobody's approval or nothing, and our landlord, you could blame it on her, but she had no, no awareness of it until just recent, and she has 28 houses. She can't watch every little house, and she's had issues, I guess, with you people. And, but our house, we've cleaned it up since Terry Tucker was there a year ago, and we've had it real nice, real quiet. And we're trying to, you know, obey all the laws and have a good time, and then this lady, I guess, she has a history. I looked it up, and she had a martini's. She's a victim of, from Roseville or Placer County, and, you know, this just goes on and on. He's flying a flag, a Mexican flag. My grandmother was born in Mexico, so this shouldn't, you know, maybe he thinks we're white, he's Mexican, I don't know. You know, we're not bigot, we're not prejudiced. He called us that, and I think he's using that on his, on the police department and on his parole officer. And Mr. Jeffries, it might be, Marvin, says parole officer, told us twice he'd be out ready to take him out of there and get him a cooling-off period. That's what he needs. And it just goes on, just a little burning rubber on the lawn, and I, I'm crippled, and the parking, he parks in front of the garage. It's open parking, but he says that's his, and he'll fight, you know, over the parking. I go, huh, so I let it go, you know, I just walk up from the street, and it's just become a real big issue. I wouldn't be here. You know, this guy's out of control, and he's like a terrorist or something. And the police officers ain't there, they can't see it, because I'm sure the nicest guy in the world when they come in and confront him, you know? And it's just, you know, I don't know what to do. This is what, my last little step, and we planned on being there until we get our own home, you know? But, you know, he just terrorized our little neighborhood, and it's not a gang house or drug house, you know, but I think...
So, this is the boyfriend of the girl that, or woman that, that was rented to?
Yeah, she brought him in, along with two pit bulls, started living in the one room.
And, and, and the landlord is doing nothing to then?
Oh, she is. She is now, but...
Yeah.
What have we got to do in the meantime? We got to walk on our tiptoes. Hopefully he don't go off any minute, because he said he's on anger management.
Unfortunately, as a city council, I don't think there's anything we could do.
I wanted to be aware that, you know, this is a problem.
But, and I understand what you're saying, the frustration that can come with getting a restraining order and not having very much power.
Can't go get one if you don't have an incident report that the true incident wasn't written down. He kicked the door in, chased my brother with two pit bulls, exposed himself to the girl that opened her room. She's in her 60s, and he told her, you know, "You so-and-so negro loving B," you know, and said, "Get back in your room." And we called on that, and we didn't get the report written up the right way.
Okay, well, we've, we've got your comments tonight, and if, and if you want, we do, Officer Baldwin's in the back, or Sergeant Russo.
Okay, because I know...
We just demoted him, but...
I know the mayor's in charge of the police department, so...
And, yeah, and there's a couple of fine gentlemen back there that'd be more glad to...
Yeah, it's just like last night. He, I went to sleep, he opened my door, and, you know, I was awake, he didn't know it, and I'm in the big family room. So, he went out two, three times, and he opened the door, and just stupid things to start a fight, I guess. him names or anything.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Williams? Hi, Mike.
And I can't hear good because of the army and so, that's why I can't fight or anything anymore. I'm a little up in age, but if I show you these pictures of where he kicked the door in herself after me?
Give them to the clerk, give them to the clerk.
And here's, and here's the wood that fell off the door, that way you know. I can't, you know, I can't protect myself the way I'm doing it because I, my breathing's real bad and my hearing's gone. And they got me on that P something and they told me to use inhalers and stuff. And this guy tried to beat me up and so, what I did was hold the door, you know, where he couldn't get in it. He kicked the door in and he started telling my friend, you know, about different things he was telling you. And he called me, I forgot, a bigot, that's what he kept calling me. He don't even know me, you know. And I don't, I don't go out of my way to fight with people because of my hearing and my, you know, breathing and everything, but, you know, this guy is way out of line, way out of line. If I was in the service, me and him would have went at it, but not no more. And all I do, all I want is something done about him. Every time I come home and stuff, he tries to intimidate me and stuff and it don't work because I don't intimidate. Now, if he was in the service with me, it'd be a whole different story. But, you know, to have a person living around you like this all the time and always trying to intimidate you, you know, that don't work. I can't hear what he says half the time, so I don't let it bother me. But, you know, if you could do something about this guy, I'd appreciate it. Because I don't want to, you know, be sleeping and all of a sudden get killed or something over just stupidity. You know, I've been through wars and everything else, I don't need this. And my age, you know, I'm up in age even though I don't look it. So, you know, I'd appreciate it very much if you could do something about it.
All right, Mike.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your patience and waiting.
And what I was going to say was, I didn't even know it was the 20th anniversary. I've lived here most of my life.
After tonight, you do.
Yeah, I lived off Park Drive.
Well, good.
Me and my brother, we used to go to San Juan School and Sylvan and Sylvan and that other one right there.
Yeah.
We used to be in all them schools. My parents owned the big green house on Park Drive.
All right, well, thank you.
So, we knew a lot of people around here at one time. We used to ride horses through these fields when we were young. It used to, it wasn't that many houses at all. Now you're a city, that really put me out near that, but, you know, I, I respect it, it's, it's nice. But I'd appreciate it if you could help me with this problem regarding-
All righty.
You know, because it seems like when people come over, all they do is talk. They don't do nothing and then after two days, he flips out again. And it's same thing all over again every time. And he, you know, he's saying things and if I could understand everything he said, you know, I could say something back to him and tell him to shut up. But it seems like, you know, it's hard for me because if you were in my disposition, you know, you ever had it hard to hear and stuff, you'd know what I'm talking about. And that's why, you know, I don't, I don't get scared of people too much. I just look at them and walk on because I don't want no problems with people. And I'd appreciate it if you could handle this. Seems like no one else is to me. Thank you very much for your time.
You had your time, sir.
I just wanted to bring that up, that was the whole issue.
Okay.
Asking to put his pit bulls away and he got mad.
Wow.
Okay, thank you very much, please.
You're welcome, Mike. Next I have Tim Schaefer.
All right, but I wanted to say the whole reason why the, it was something very light and stupid. Okay.
Hi, Tim.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Miller and other council members here. I just wanted to dovetail on what David Warren talked about. I also read the article in the Sacramento Business Journal regarding Dignity's financial health. Not, not great, not a great article to read. It was interviewed of the officials from Dignity Health, this is something some investigative reporter did. Certainly, I get phone calls, I led the group that was against moving City Hall and putting the medical office building, so certainly, there's about 1,400 people and I got, well, I probably get 20 emails a month asking what's going on with the medical office building. There, you know, it's, it is an area of great concern. We, we really, you know, it was a hard-fought battle and, and I, I think that it worked out to, you know, it's a beautiful building here, but we, you know, we, we in good faith acted with Dignity Health and at this point, I think we're, we're losing money every day that, that goes by that construction doesn't happen. You know, we have no money coming in, we have roads to repair, we have all kinds of other issues. And I, I think we have to really be vigilant about sticking with them and making sure that they're moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I don't have any other cards, anybody else like to speak? And we could fill a card out later, other than that, I think we move on to the next item.
The next item is the consent calendar and it's recommended, recommending approval of all items unless council wishes to pull any for separate action or discussion.
I'll move consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar passes, 3-0.
Next item, public hearing, there are none. The next item is regular calendar, item number 10, and the subject is appointments to regional boards and committees. This item is each January, the mayor makes appointments to several regional boards and commissions or committees, and four of those regional boards require a formal motion of the city council by resolution. So before you tonight are four resolutions confirming those appointments to the Sacramento Air Quality Management District, the Sacramento Area Sewer District, and Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, the Sacramento Transportation Authority, and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. And the mayor traditionally announces those appointments to the various regional boards and committees and that list has been provided to the city council.
Yeah, but he's, since he's not here, I changed everything. Is that okay? Yeah, seriously.
Yeah, one question. Is this, do these, does this, do these resolutions only require a simple majority of the total city council?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so-
Just checking.
Get through this. I thought before we made the motions, I'd just quickly read the appointments. And then we, I, I think, can we act them all together there, Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. For the law enforcement, Criminal Justice Cabinet with the county Chief Lawrence. For the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, Mel Turner with Brett Daniels as his alternate. For the Sacramento Public Library Authority, Mayor Slowey and Mel Turner as alternate. For both the Sacramento Area Sewer District and the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, Jeannie Bruins is the appointee and myself as the alternate. For the Sacramento Transportation Authority, Mel Turner is the designee with Brett Daniels as the alternate. For Sacramento Area Council of Governments, Mayor Slowey is the appointee and myself as the alternate. Regional Transit, I will continue with regional transit with Mayor Slowey as the alternate. And for Air Quality, Councilmember Daniels with Councilmember Bruins as the alternate. And there's a few others that are just like liaisons to local entities where two members represent the city. Suicide's Chamber of Commerce will be myself and Brett Daniels. Education and Community Programs with San Juan Unified would be Jay Bruins and Jeff Slowey. Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District, Mel Turner, Brett Daniels. Inner Governmental Relations is Steve Mueller and Brett Daniels. Sunrise Marketplace, Jeannie Bruins and Steve Mueller. Mayors and Board Chair Forum Collaborative, Mayor Slowey and myself. For the Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee's Finance and Admin will be Jeff Slowey and myself. Quality of Life, Jeff Slowey and Jeannie Bruins. Legislative, Brett Daniels, Mel Turner. And Law Enforcement, Jay Bruins and Jay Slowey. So with that, I'd entertain a motion for the ones that need a motion and a resolution.
I move that we approve the resolutions that are required to make these appointments.
Second.
Very good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that concludes that item with a majority vote in favor, so on to department reports.
So, Department Report Number 11, the subject is the Mitchell Farms Development Application Update.
Good evening, Mayor Members of the, or Vice Mayor Members of the Council, Colleen McDuffie with the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'm here tonight on just a very brief information item to let you know about the status of the Mitchell Farms development. So, most of you I think are familiar with its location, where the Sunrise Golf Course is, it's the area outlined in red. And essentially, it includes the area of the golf course and, and then some surrounding areas. The old miniature golf course has the, a tributary of Arcade Creek that runs right through the, the middle of the site. So we did, thank you. Thank you. So the application was submitted in November by Watt Communities. It includes about 260 homes located both north and south sides of that tributary that you see in blue on this slide here. They are all single-family homes detached, but three different product types, kind of a typical single-family product type similar to Autumn Wood, as well as some alley-loaded development and some cluster units. One of the centerpieces of the project will be the creek area, the open space area that runs through the middle of the site. And that's being proposed that the Park and Rec District would eventually assume ownership and that a, a trail system would be constructed within that area. So in terms of timeline, the application was submitted in November, last month, in December, we gave the applicant a letter with all the different comments, both from the city as well as different entities that review development projects such as the sewer district, fire, all the service agencies. So in January, where we are now, the applicant has been meeting with both city representatives as well as, I know this week they're meeting, I believe, with the fire district and the water district and just working through all the details of the project. What we are doing this month is we're preparing an RFP for the CQ consultant. We anticipate an EIR will be required and that EIR process will, to a great extent, drive the timeline. So we're trying to get that keyed up right now and best guess, you know, a lot can change, but we anticipate probably February, March of 2018 is when the project would actually be considered by the Planning Commission and the city council. So that's it, we just wanted to come tonight and kind of let you know about the project and let you know the status of it.
Any questions?
And I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you so much for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Colleen.
Next item, please.
Next item is City Manager Items.
Yes, I do, council. I, I wanted to comment further based off of Councilmember Daniels' comments regarding the storm. I appreciate those comments because, you know, this storm that we experienced was really the most significant winter storm that we've had in the last 10 years. And the impact of this storm on Citrus Heights, I want you to know, is limited to just several downed trees, some minor street flooding, and to our knowledge, no property damage. Given the magnitude of the storm, I would definitely call that a success. So I, I want the council and the community to, to know that results like this are accomplished not only by the efforts of the General Services Department staff, but, but also the other departments, all the hard-working men and women in those departments. The Police Department Command coordinates the storm response with GSD Daily during the storm. And with the Community and Economic Development staff, they make themselves available to assist and, and many staff members from, from all the departments participated and got right in there, rolled their sleeves up. Just by way, just a little bit of history, how we achieved these results, beginning really in 2010, the General Services staff and working with the residents identified areas of the city that were prone to flooding. If you remember, I mean, we've had, we've had a lot of flooding in the past. And we implemented a storm drain capital improvement program. This program has installed now over 12,000 lineal feet of storm drain pipe, more than two miles of, of pipe, and 85 new drainage inlets throughout the city. Also beginning in 2010, the city started an annual storm drain pipe cleaning program. That program cleans approximately 250,000 lineal feet of storm drain pipe each year and ensures that the existing drainage system is functioning as, as efficiently as possible. The storm drain maintenance program has cleaned over 1.75 million lineal feet of pipe since 2010. General Services also cleans and maintains the 26 miles of creeks that run through the city, to make sure there are no obstructions in the creeks when the storms hit. And this past week alone, the city distributed over 100 cubic yards of sand for sandbags at our two sandbag locations, which equates to about 10,000 sandbags. And it's important to note, we've been really great about getting this information out, that the city has sand and sandbags available to all residents each year from October through April. General Services, working with the police department, responded to about 60 calls for service during the storm and about 14 of those were for downed trees. So, so prior to this storm, General Services and Police Command Staff, again, met to coordinate communication, chain of command, available personnel, emergency procedures, identification of likely areas of flooding. So I also wanted to add that our new contractor, MCE, that we are using have, just wanted the council to know, they've been working out great, great ratings from our staff and a contributor to some of the success. So I, I really want to just communicate how proud I am of our staff and, you know, I was monitoring their work during these storms and they had their war, war room up and they were really working this thing and were on top of it and just did a great job and pleased with the result of that, so thank you.
I don't think we can appreciate how significant that is, that report is, unless we've lived through the olden days where you couldn't drive, you couldn't drive on Sylvan Road, I mean, so, so many of the streets that are main arterials were underwater during a storm and so hats off to staff over the years for having taken this on as a priority. And, you know, it's amazing that we've had no flooding this year. Thank you for the report.
Back in the olden days, my dad used to pile his kids in the car on a rainy day and we'd go driving through the, you know, flooded streets, yeah, flooded streets. And I fired up the old four, four-wheel drive Sunday and Monday to go do that and I couldn't find any in our city, so good job. Thank you. Next item, please.
So next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Jeannie?
Nothing for me.
I do have one. I met with the folks, Sacramento Taking Action Against Nicotine Dependence, and it was kind of the same thing as this young man and, and woman spoke about with the- reward these types of actions by the apartment owners. And I was looking for someone to second the idea of having them come and speak for 10, 15 minutes as a presentation.
Well, they can make a presentation.
Yeah.
It's not something we're gonna vote on.
No, exactly.
I don't think it requires...
I thought it was worth hearing them out. So is that a second?
Well, you don't need a second, I mean...
Oh, for a presentation? Well, I'm not the mayor.
Okay, well, if they want to come and make a presentation, they should run it through Amy and get on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll send them to you, Amy. And Brett brought it to my attention, there may be some of you here for appointments to the, the commissions like the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals. That is not till the next council meeting in January 26th and is when we'll be making...
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Well put. No idea.
Take him home, Gene.
Well, if, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.